Good afternoon, colleagues. Amina Trenta cinco, Elles Laturan Guahan is back from recess. When we last left, Senator Sabina Perez had the floor on closing. I will recognize you, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I would like to thank my colleagues for all their passion, please, to support this bill. Before I go into closing, I would like to proffer an amendment, actually, two amendments. The First Amendment has been passed out. It begins on line 26 on page 2. It reads, so it's in the section of possession, section C. It states, "Any person deemed in possession of fish, taken while scuba diving, shall be a violation of this section and subject to the application applicable fines or terms of imprisonment contained in section 63129A." The amendment reads, "The possession of, one, any scuba diving equipment, and, two, fish, or, three, spear guns, spears, or similar equipment in or near the water where fish can be taken or aboard any fishing vessel or boat is prima facie evidence of a violation of this section and is subject to applicable fines or terms of imprisonment contained in section 63129." So the purpose of this amendment was to facilitate enforcement because it's very difficult to enforce scuba fishing if you're not present. And so by adding this language, to have these two elements, scuba gear, fish, or fishing equipment, together in a boat or a vessel, would initiate the process of bringing it to the court's attention. So it definitely facilitates the enforcement aspect, something which during the public hearing was opined about, that we lack the enforcement ability. You know, we pass laws, but we lack enforcement ability, and this would definitely provide more power to enforcement of this ban. Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Theresa Lai, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of this amendment. I just, I think this would help the Department of Agriculture Conservation Officers to enforce what is being proposed in the bill and to, because it's very hard to prove the scuba fishing unless you're actually out there in the water with them. So this would help them to enforce it if they just see equipment and the scuba equipment, I mean, scuba equipment and the fish together. I guess I would just like to ask to clarify a number where it says diving equipment and fish, and then the or spear guns, does the or apply to after one and two, or does it, does it only apply to fish or spear guns, I guess? I guess it's the or that's a little bit, just fish or spear guns. So you have to have scuba diving equipment and either fish or spear guns is how the council's signaling me that that should be read. I would just maybe make a motion that council can make further amendments to this if necessary after we pass it.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the main amendment, Senator Mary Torres, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to request that the proffer of this amendment explain why the marine, other marine animals was deleted from this section.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Sabina Perez, would you like to yield to Senator Torres's question?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker. So it was brought to my attention that fish, actually, the definition of fish is any aquatic animal life, including but not limited to oysters, clams, mollusks, mussels, crustaceans, and other shellfish, and coral. So by taking that out, we weren't reducing the impact of it because the law itself encompasses that.
So as I understand it, that definition is contained in the same statute, then? Okay, all right, I didn't read that far. Madam Speaker, I have some concerns with this amendment. I understand the need to have prima facie evidence, but the combination of it as is just seems rather severe, and it just seems rather severe that the presence of one or the other would constitute, you know, a cause, and I just, I'm just expressing that. I would need to read a little further into it.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, Senator Perez, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So in talking to some of the constituents, I was also shocked at the atrocities of what is taking place outside when it comes to scuba fishing. And some of the variations that they use is, like my good colleague mentioned, is they use a Tekken and combination of scuba, where they're able to chase all the fish into the nets. And I thought that was, you know, pretty egregious. And so in thinking about this amendment, I was thinking about what different combinations people can use with scuba gear in carrying out this overfishing of our environment. And this is what compelled me to, or this is what informed me about this amendment. And I think also to be clear that these are just evidence that is brought before the court, and it can be defended in court. So it doesn't automatically assume that the person has violated if they can show that evidence that they were not, you know, that they weren't purposely doing it, or they weren't doing any scuba fishing for this matter. So they are subject, but not in violation automatically, they're not automatically violating, but it just basically is evidence, it's enough evidence to bring before a court to initiate the court proceedings.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the motion, there was an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand in support of the Perez amendment. Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have another amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I proffer this amendment, I would like to also, well, let me just actually proffer this amendment. So this amendment reads, "To add a new section to the bill, 53-35, to read, the Department of Agriculture shall submit a report within 30 days of the passage of this act on the status of hiring additional two conservation officers authorized in the fiscal year 2020 Budget Act, and report on enforcement efforts to curb the incidence of overfishing and poaching of the marine preserves, and propose limitations on additional size and catch of various species." So this amendment is in response to some of the concerns that were raised during the public hearing. Again, you know, scuba, the ban of scuba fishing is an important step to stopping overfishing in our waters, but in addition to that, in addition to the ban, we have to have enforcement efforts. And this ensures that measures are being taken, and it's being prioritized to help complement this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the main amendment, Senator Theresa Lai, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank my colleague for this amendment. I stand in support of this amendment. I think this amendment will help to get to the real bottom of what the fishermen were talking about at the public hearing, and in particular, the Yamaha boats overfishing was a very, very common concern. And so, and not just within the marine preserves, but outside of the marine preserves, and as one of my colleagues said, even immediately outside the marine preserves, there, I mean, that's, it's a system that they're using. And I think it's very important that the fishermen here, as we put more restrictions on them, that we are also putting more, you know, accountability on the Department of Agriculture to help us to enforce existing laws. And I know that if they prioritize this, they will have success, because we have seen the Department of Agriculture Conservation Officers have much success. Their armory is full of confiscated weapons. I remember them showing that to us once, and the, you know, they've asked for, and I hope, I've been successful now in ensuring that they receive hazardous pay for their hazardous conditions. And enforcing fishing restrictions is hazardous, and I think we can all appreciate that. If they really want to be serious about it, they're going to have to do it at night, and they're going to have to go, you know, against people who are very determined to do these types of activities, Madam Speaker. They wanted, they had seven conservation officers, and I remember in the last term, they had asked, please, please give us 10. And we were able to, in 2020, bring it up to nine, and I know that they still want more. So the latest testimony from the Department of Ag has asked for, I think, up to 30 officers. But at least with nine, that would have been an improvement over seven, and hopefully they would be able to prioritize. So I appreciate the urging of the Department of Agriculture to, let's, you know, show the fishermen in good faith that we are going to, they all want to be just treated fairly. They all want it to show that. They're not the only ones who are acting in good faith, you know, holding back from catching fish that they know they shouldn't catch. They want that to be enforced on everyone. And so I think, I hope that Department of Ag will be able to focus on this, Madam Speaker, and I thank again the offer of the amendment.
Senator Theresa, on the amendment, Senator Regina Bisco-Lee, I will recognize you.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just have a, I would like to pose a question to the author of this amendment, if she would yield.
Please, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I support the intent of this amendment, but it's been my understanding that we in this body have many times provided for the executive branch to hire additional, in this case, conservation officers, or also in the case of revenue and tax, we have set aside appropriations for them to budget additional warm bodies in each of their respective agencies. So I'm in favor of submitting a report within 30 days of the passage of this act, but what happens if they're unable, for whatever reason, to acquire the two additional conservation officers? And 30 days passes, they submit a report to us saying that they were not able to get these folks on board yet. Maybe they have an issue with Department of Administration or somewhere else in the process. I just would like maybe to continue to receive a report until the additional two conservation officers are hired, because sometimes, as we know, things take time. So I'd just like to register my concern with the language in the bill. I'm sorry, the amendment.
So Senator Lee, you're also inquiring for her to answer justification for the need. Senator Perez, would you like to respond?
Yes, Madam Speaker. So I understand perhaps it's prescriptive, it may be too prescriptive, in just setting out 30 days, within 30 days, but I think in any case, at the end of that report, perhaps within 30 days, that should there be a difficulty in hiring these two conservation officers, at least the status would be provided, and maybe action steps can be provided at that time. I'm open to language, by the way, if the good senator would like to submit an amendment to the amendment.
Sisus Massey, Senator Perez. Senator Lee?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. If I could just request a brief recess, I'd like to just discuss with maybe legal counsel if we can include language that might say, shall submit a report within 30 days of the passage of this act, and a continual report until the additional two conservation officers are hired. So I will work with them to make that amendment.
We will take a moment's recess. Amina Trenta cinco, Elles Laturan Guahan is back from recess. Senator Lee, thank you. You have the floor on the amendment to the Perez, Theresa Lai amendment. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker and colleagues, thank you for your indulgence. The amendment, the amendment should read, "To add a new section to bill 53-35, quote, 'The Department of Agriculture shall submit a report to Elles Laturan Guahan within 30 days of the passage of this act on the hiring status of the additional two conservation officers authorized in FY 2020 Budget Act, provided that if said conservation officers are not hired within the 30 days, the department shall continue to report on a monthly basis regarding the status of such hiring. Further, the department shall report on enforcement efforts to curb the incidence of overfishing and poaching of the marine preserves, and propose limitations on the additional size and catch of various species.'" It concludes by allowing It concludes by allowing legal counsel to make technical edits."
Sutus Massey, Senator Lee. On the amendment to the amendment, to the main amendment, Senator Taitzino, you are recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I think that with this amendment, there is the clarity that one was seeking. I am just wondering if the author could speak to whether it's clear for the second report, if it is now clear that it's going to be within 30 days or what the intention was for the due date of the second report.
Sutus Massey, Senator Taitzino. Senator Lee, would you like to answer?
With pleasure, Madam Speaker, and I'll repeat on the third line, "Provided that if said conservation officers are not hired within the 30 days, the department shall continue to report on a monthly basis regarding the status of such hiring." So we want them to report to us within 30 days of the passage of this act, and then if the conservation officers are not hired for whatever reason within 30 days, please continue to report to us monthly until those conservation officers are hired based on the appropriations from FY 2020.
Sutus Massey, Senator Lee. Senator Taitzino, will that suffice?
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. I think I should clarify my question a little further because there is potentially in this two second reports. So in the second report, I was actually referring to the report on enforcement efforts to curb the incidents. So the 30 days is clear in the way that it's written, that that would be a continuing process, but there's a second type of report on enforcement efforts. And so I just wanted to make sure that the author's intentions are indeed there. So if she wanted it to be within 30 days, if that clarity is there.
Thank you. She probably has an answer. Senator Lee, would you like to yield?
Yes, absolutely, Madam Speaker, and I just want to clarify, the amendment to the amendment is the underlying section that we're discussing now. So we have to dispense with this amendment, and then we can discuss that second portion of the original amendment, and perhaps the author of that amendment could speak to that a little bit further in terms of the report on enforcement efforts. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Taitzino, we will dispose of the underlying amendment to the Paris amendment, okay? With that being said, anyone else wishing to speak on the Lee amendment? Senator Therese Terlaoui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the amendment to continue the reporting after 30 days until the hiring is done, and I think that just adds to the transparency that we're encouraging at the Department of Ag and that, you know, in our conversation with the fishermen, this is what they want. They want enforcement. They're not trying to not have enforcement. They want enforcement, and so I think it's good that they're going to be able to see right away whether that's going to happen. I would, I hear the other concern brought up by the previous speaker, and I think we should add in an amendment to this amendment that says further, where it says further, "The department shall report," and just add in the words "within 30 days" on, so add in the words "within 30 days" as an amendment to this amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So thank you, Senator Terlaoui. I will address that amendment to the amendment after we disclose of Senator Lee's amendment. So on the Lee amendment, are there any objections? Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, no objections. Motion carries. To the Paris main amendment, I will address Senator Therese's amendment to the amendment, and Senator Therese, can you just clarify it for the record that after shall report, if you can just restate that amendment, please?
Yes, I'm just amending the same sentence that previous senator amended. Further, the department shall report, and my amendment is to add the words "within 30 days."
On that amendment, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. So on the amendment as amended, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Here, Senator Paris, do you wish to close or?
I just wanted to maybe add a comma after "overfishing" because it looks like it's overfishing and poaching only with marine preserves, but we wanted to have a report on overfishing in general, outside, within and outside of marine preserves.
Thank you, Senator Paris. On that amendment to add the comma, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the amendment as amended, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Paris, you still have the floor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to thank my co-sponsors, you, Madam Speaker, Tina Muni Barnes, Senator Clint Rigel, and I also would like to add Vice Speaker Nelson as a co-sponsor.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Paris?
I would also like to thank former Speaker B.J. Cruz, who had the foresight to propose this legislation back in 2009. I would like to also thank Marine Mania for making this a priority with this term, and for all those who came out in the public hearing, that four-hour public hearing, many of them fishermen, students, a whole scientists and other concerned community members that came out in support of this. And so it's been 10 years since this ban was first proposed, and what we've seen is a decline in our fish stocks, and we're in a crisis situation. My feeling is that we're in a crisis situation, and I think it's important that we take the stand to continue to ban scuba fishing. And we have this measure. We can either choose an action and thus forcing our fishermen to struggle with increasing fish stocks, or we can make the right decision to protect this precious resource for future generations. Make no mistake that this bill is about taking responsibility for our natural resources, much like our ancestors before us. The decision we make will have long-term repercussions. And should we join our oceanic cultures in protecting a practice that nourishes and defines us as a people, or do we turn a blind eye, ignoring the struggle of our fishermen and allowing our fishing practices to die out? We must protect our cultural fishing practices. Scuba fishing is not cultural, it's not historical, it's not safe, and it's not sustainable. Our ancestors wisely and sustainably managed their fishing practices, and we must do the same. It is time to protect our fisheries and fishing traditions, and I ask my colleagues to join me in banning this dangerous practice and protecting our way of life. Sutus Massey.
Senator Paris, can we move it to the voting file, please, on the motion to?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to move Bill 53-35 as amended to the third reading file for vote.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Sabina Paris, you are now recognized on Bill number 84-35.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill number 84-35 COR as substituted. It's an act to amend Article 9 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to extending plug-in electric vehicle rebate program to private businesses and nonprofit organizations, and extending the rebate phase-out period, and to add a new Chapter 2, Title 7, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to implementing the same.
I'm going to announce to my colleagues that this version, as substituted, on the floor, has been put on everybody's desk, and if everybody has a copy. So on the motion to accept the substituted version, Senator Therese Terlaoui, you will be recognized.
If we can clarify, this substitute version, I, one of these bills, the substitute version had a public hearing, and I guess I just got confused. Is this the one, or is this a different?
They both had a public hearing, I believe, on the same day.
So on this, there is a motion to substitute Bill number 84-35 COR. Do I hear an objection? If not, motion carries. Senator Paris, on the motion to move to the third reading.
Madam Speaker, thank you. I move to place Bill 84-35 COR as substituted on the floor in the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Was, did the title change? On the motion, Senator Paris, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I would like to provide some explanation in regards to the substitute bill. So some of the things that were changed was the term zero emissions was added to the definition to plug-in electric vehicle. This was done to clarify that the rebate should not apply to plug-in hybrid vehicles. It was never the intent of the original law to subsidize hybrids, which are not net zero emissions and already which have a higher market saturation. To date, no rebate has been given by the Guam Energy Office for the purchase of any hybrid vehicle, nor do they wish to start. The purpose of this program was to subsidize new clean technology and spur the adoption of vehicles that are unfamiliar to the public. The next edit regards to cleaning up clarifying language. In the old bill, the original bill, it would appear that the rebate only applied to vehicles that are valued $30,000 or less, and we wanted to make sure that it applies to any vehicle, any vehicle of any value. So these were some of the clarifying language that this substitute bill provides. So Bill 84-35, it promotes the adoption of electrical vehicles on Guam, and it does so by adopting rules and regulations for local electric vehicle rebate, by extending these rebates to not just individuals but businesses and nonprofits. I would like to thank my co-sponsors, Speaker Muni Barnes and Senator Regina Lee. So currently, Guam law provides a 10% rebate on any electric vehicle bought on Guam, but as I said earlier, it only applies to individuals, and what this bill does, it proposes to expand that rebate to businesses and nonprofits. And it's important that we encourage electric vehicles on our roads. And so what Bill 84-35 does, it extends a 10% rebate for the first 100 cars that are purchased, and after 100 cars are purchased, then that rebate is reduced 50%, and after, in six months' time, it's reduced to 25%. So when this bill was first introduced, the only model of electric vehicles was sold on Guam was the Nissan Leaf. I'm encouraged to see that we have another model. It's the Hyundai Kona EV, and in 2020, I believe, many different auto manufacturers are planning to ramp up their production of electric vehicles. So you'll be seeing more models being offered in the market in the near future. So an electric car, so what's great about an electric car is that one charge can run up to 150 to 250 miles, and that charge, it can be charged overnight using an outlet at home. And electric vehicles are really ideal for Guam, and especially not only individuals but our businesses, because it reduces our carbon footprint. And the other thing is that it reduces the use, the need for oil. As I understand, that there is no oil changes that are needed, and in a couple years, we might have to deal with a used oil problem. And so by transitioning to electric vehicles, we are also solving another issue, which is the waste of used oil. So in addition to combating climate change, we're affecting a zero-waste program. The other thing that this bill does, it helps our economy. Unfortunately, Guam's biggest export is cash. We send hundreds of millions of dollars off island every year to purchase oil and gas, and while it's true that much of our power comes from oil, power plants are three times more efficient at producing energy than it would be required by using your gas-powered car. So thus, it's far better for the environment and for our economy. It is time that our island moves towards cleaner, cheaper modes of transportation, and I think electric vehicles I would like to see as part of the future for Guam. Sutus Massey.
Buen perez, Senator Paris. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone on the main motion? Senator Therese Terlaoui, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the sponsor of this bill, and I stand in support of the bill. The bill clarifies, I think, some necessary things. It was interesting that they pointed out at the public hearing that since the original law passed, there were only five people who have applied and received these $3,000 rebates. So this new bill expands the programs to nonprofits and also to businesses. It looks like they will also be qualified now for the $3,000 rebate, and, but businesses and nonprofits will have a maximum of three rebates per lifetime of the business or nonprofit. And I just wanted to ask the sponsor if she would yield if this, I just want to ensure that this still sticks to the $100 cap, I guess, on rebates. So according to the money they have now, per my calculations, they have a $51,000 balance. They can only give out 17,000, I mean, sorry, 17 more rebates at $3,000 each, and that would only be a total of 22 rebates from that original money. And, but they had a cap of 100, so I guess I just wanted to ask the sponsor if we're keeping the cap of 100, and if she intends that we further are going to appropriate money towards this program, or are we going to just stick with that $51,000 that's there? And I'm happy with that because that's still 17 more vehicles, and at the pace, it looks like that's enough for now. But I guess if I would ask the sponsor to yield, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator Terlaoui, thank you very much. Senator Paris, would you like to yield?
Yes, I would like, I would like to, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so regarding the cap, basically what, it's basically the phase-out period that after 100 vehicles are sold, then the rebate would be decreased by 50%. I'm not sure if I got that, that was one of the questions. So yes, we haven't changed, I haven't amended that part of the bill. In regards to additional monies, that would have to come through appropriations. So that is dependent upon the budget and the needs, of course, priorities, what are the priorities our place. Also would be dependent upon, are there other revenue sources that can help fund this type of program? But again, we were actually approached by Guam Energy Office because the program had money in it, and it wasn't being utilized, and we wanted to address that by extending it to other entities, and so this is what the purpose of this bill was for.
Thank you, Senator Paris. Senator Therese, will that suffice?
Yes, thank you very much to the sponsor, Madam Speaker, and I guess I would just like to clarify one more item. On page three of the bill, line seven, the substitute version shows that, it shows the cap of $3,000 per qualified plug-in electric drive motor, and on all the rest of the references, it's to drive motor vehicle, and I just, I'm not very familiar with these cars. I just want to make sure that there's only one drive motor in every vehicle, so that would be per vehicle. Is that correct?
Thank you, Senator. I will ask Senator Paris. Senator Paris, would you like to answer that question?
So if I'm understanding the question correctly, yes, it's per vehicle, and I believe this language is there to clarify perhaps what's reflected in Guam Energy Office as far as what the specifics are when they're giving out these rebates.
Thank you, Senator Paris. Senator Therese?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just then maybe amend on line seven to add the word "vehicle" at the end. That would make it consistent with lines four, lines two, and the rest of the bill.
Thank you, Senator Therese. On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Paris, would you like, Senator Bisco Lee, we're going to take a moment's recess. It's almost 4 o'clock. Imena Trenta Cinco, Nellis Latu, Guam, is back from recess. Senator Bisco Lee, I will recognize you at this time on the main motion. Thank you.
Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support for Bill 85-35, and I thank the good author for allowing me to be an early adopter, pun intended, for this important government rebate to be expanded and extended. Zero emission vehicles are a very good alternative for island residents looking to do their part to help the environment. And as has been mentioned during the deliberations on this bill, an existing program that helps to subsidize the upfront cost to purchase these sometimes expensive vehicles hasn't gone far enough to fulfill the original intent. Madam Speaker, the legislation before us today will help encourage even more commuters to use these rebates, including a new limited availability to businesses and nonprofit organizations locally. As mentioned in testimony by Ernie Galito from Atkins-Krohl during the public hearing, this new incentive can help the businesses that consume the most fuel and spend the most time on our roads to invest in zero emission vehicles. We're talking about taxi cabs, rental car companies, fast food restaurants that deliver, and those in our community that offer courier services. Madam Speaker, this won't just save on their bottom lines, but it'll also transform some of the most-used cars on Guam into a fleet that meets the highest standard of fuel efficiency. But I do want to caution my colleagues that this expansion should be met with a commitment to fully fund this rebate. The Guam Energy Office is still due some $20,000 to meet the initial amount to pay for the 100 rebates. And just as I mentioned before, the upcoming budget deliberations on a previous measure in this session, I want to encourage my colleagues to find some room in our upcoming budget discussions and upcoming appropriations act for this needed and transformative rebate. Let's continue this body's very strong record of adopting the best environmental policies for our future, for the future of our island and future generations. Sudus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Lee. On the main motion, Senator Mars Taitzno, I will recognize you.
Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker. I want to rise in support of this bill. As an island, we are more vulnerable than other types of locations in many ways. We are starting to see more consciousness regarding the need to protect and preserve what we have, to follow rules of sustainability with our limited and susceptible resources. This bill takes an existing concept of encouraging kinder, more responsible use of our island, that of plug-in electric vehicles, and make the rebate program more viable by encouraging businesses and nonprofits to also consider electric vehicle use. The amendments, or I should say, the changes that this bill brings forward is responsible in that businesses and nonprofits are required to be in good standing, and it encourages businesses and nonprofits but places a limit on their participation so as to encourage the participation in a program like this by many and not just a few. So for those many reasons, I do stand in support for this bill. Sudus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Taitzno. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Sabina, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I just wanted to also point out another amendment, just to coincide with the previous amendment made by one of my previous speakers. The amendment that was made without objection was the rebate shall not exceed $3,000 per qualified plug-in electric motor vehicle. That change was made in the Guam Code Annotated, but if we can do a consistent change in the rules and regs, the accompanying rules and regs as well, on page, well, page two of the rules and regs. So I would like to proffer that amendment, just to coincide or complement the change in GCA.
And if we can just ask, do the blanket coverage ask legal to make sure, do the technical amendments necessary to make that happen?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would like to propose that the legal counsel make technical amendments as necessary.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just also wanted to provide a little background. The bill adopts rules and regs written by the Guam Energy Office that had previously gone through the AAA process. However, before being added by the compiler of laws, it was noted that a few elements of the proposed rules and regs were not fully authorized by the Guam Code Annotated, and as such, the AAA process was stopped, and those portions were removed. So thus, this bill, once adopted, will attach the rules and regs to coincide with the Guam Code Annotated. So that's just a little bit of the background regarding the rules and regs. So it was fully vetted, but the fact that they didn't adjust the GCA prior to the rules and regs. So regarding 84-35, I feel that the future in Guam is transitioning towards electric vehicles. Electric vehicles are better for our environment, because not only do they reduce our carbon footprint and our reliance on fossil fuels, particularly when recharged using renewable energy or power plants that are more efficient in producing energy. Electric vehicles are also cheaper because they're less costly to maintain, and they eliminate the need for oil changes, and therefore the need to divert used oil as we move towards zero waste for Guam. And as I said earlier, it is more economical. We export millions of dollars in cash for our purchase of oil when we can use that same amount of money to be reinvested in our local economy. I think it's time for our island to move toward cleaner and cheaper modes of transportation, particularly with electric vehicles, and this bill is an important step in spurring this transition. Sudus Massey.
On the motion to push to third reading voting file, Senator Perez, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 84-35 COR as substituted on the floor to be placed in the third reading file for voting.
On that motion, without any objections, hearing none, motion carries. Senator Sabina Flores Perez, you are recognized on Bill number 90-35 COR.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to set aside Bill 90-35 COR as substituted and amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation Procurement.
On that motion to just set aside at this time, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Vice Speaker Nelson?
Speaker Barnes, you are recognized.
Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill number 154-35 COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice, introduced by myself, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, which is an act to authorize Imaga Haga, Imaga Lain, Magahaga, Guam to relocate 384 plus-minus square meters of existing bukart trail within lots 5007-3, 5007-4, and 5071-1, number 1-2, for the public right-of-way use. I'd like to move it to the third reading and speak briefly on it, Madam Speaker, if I may.
Para discuti consigui.
Sudus Massey, talu, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Bill number 154-35 that was introduced as a solution to help remedy a property issue affecting landowners and residents in the village in Dedido around the Seven Day Supermarket and Sweet Home area. Right now, the residents are transiting through the private property to get to their homes because of a lack of convenient access from Route 16. Madam Speaker, this bill will exchange an unused portion of a bukart trail with land owned by Momo Corporation to facilitate a better access point for residents, and to a permanent solution is determined by the government of Guam. I do want to note that Momo Corporation will exchange 746 plus-or-minus square meters of their property with the 384 plus-or-minus square meters of government land from the bukart trail. The lot owners affected include Mrs. Young Sukku, owner of lot number 5007-3, who is in support of the bill. Momo Corporation owner of lot 5071, number 1-2, who are also in support of this bill, Madam Speaker, and the Rosario Family Trust, who owns lot number 5007-4, are currently leasing their property to Momo Corporation for over 20 more years. Madam Speaker, I want my colleagues to note that the bill also received, the bill also received support from the Department of Land Management as well as the Department of Public Works, and I believe that this exchange will better the community until a permanent solution is determined, and I ask that my colleagues please help me and support the same. And I'd also like to thank the Oversight Chair on Lands for literally looking at the opportunity and working closely with our office to try and find a resolve to help the community residents in that area. So thank you for letting me speak on this Bill number 154-35, and I humbly ask my colleagues to please help me support those same efforts. Sudus Massey.
Thank you very much, Speaker Barnes. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the motion? Senator Taitzno, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to reiterate the remarks of the speaker, the previous speaker, and that I support this bill, and it took me a while to really get in full support of it, and I want to just explain why. And if you look at your maps, and you turn it so that you can read the wording on the top, so that's the direction I'll be talking, this is a lot adjacent to Route 16, or we're talking about the Seven Day and Harmon, not in Jota. So that's a Seven Day Market up there. They have like a sister business, Sweet Home, of course. But behind those businesses are residences, and that's the issue, is how to get to the residences behind there where there used to be a bukart trail that they could access. The problem is, on a completely different lot that's not mentioned in this bill, the access has been blocked by an encroachment. They built a warehouse on the bukart trail. So that's really like the underlying problem, and I've tried with Public Works to get them to address it so we could include it in this bill and put some pressure on, you know, a real resolution, but we're not successful with a long-term resolution. But what these businesses have offered in the interim is they've allowed use of an access point from Route 16 adjacent to Sweet Home. So you see the big square? So you can come off of Route 16 adjacent to Sweet Home and then hit the bukart trail to access the back, and that avoids the encroached property. So the deal's actually a good one for the government, because it gives a much larger access in exchange for the bukart trail. So the bukart trail square meters, as the speaker pointed out earlier, is much less than the access point in the far, it's like an L-shaped, coming from Sweet Home, it's an L. Sweet Home, you're going to go straight to the back and then turn right, that's going to be the new access. That's going to be permanent property of the government of Guam. The owners of the adjacent lot, Seven Day Supermarket, will be able to attain the small bukart trail between these lots. But if you look at the bottom of the drawing where it has a large rectangle on the bottom left-hand corner, that's really the butler-type building that is encroaching on the actual bukart trail. So I still hope that DPW will resolve this for a long-term solution and take care of that original encroachment. I want to thank the property owners for allowing access while they are leasing this property, and thank the speaker for her efforts to resolve this situation, for the residences who are behind both of these businesses. Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sudus Massey, Senator Taitzno. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Barnes, you're welcome to close.
Sudus Massey, Madam Speaker. I'd just like, again, to thank the Oversight Chair for doing her due diligence and working closely with all the concerned residents and truly giving access so that the residents of Dedido can traverse through the area. I move that Bill number 154-35 COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice be moved to the third reading voting file. Sina Massey.
There has been a motion to move Bill number... There has been, there has been a motion to move Bill number 154-35 COR into the third reading voting file. Are there any objections? There are no objections.
Madam Speaker, can we take a moment's recess, please?
Before I gabble down or after?
After you gabble down.
Okay. Motion passes. We are in recess.
Amina Trenta Cinco, Nales Latu'nguahon is back from recess. Majority Leader, Vice Speaker Nelson, I will recognize you this time.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motions, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Majority Leader, Vice Speaker Nelson, you are still recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to append Resolution number 311-35 COR to today's session journal.
Colleagues, on the motion to append Resolution number 311-35 COR to today's session journal, are there any objections? Hearing none or seeing?
Madam Speaker, I'm going to restate my motion. I move to append Resolution number 311-35 COR to today's session journal.
On that motion, would you like to?
(inaudible).
On the motion, hearing no objection, seeing none, motion carries. Vice Speaker, Majority Leader Nelson, you are still recognized at this time.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. I move to resolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Kenjo Ma'Anau Ada, former mayor of Jonah, and to recess until 10:00 a.m. Thursday, March 5, 2020.
Colleagues, a motion was made to resolve into the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of conducting the state funeral services for the late Honorable Kenjo Ma'Anau Ada, former mayor of Jonah, and to recess until 10:00 a.m. Thursday, March 5. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Amina Trenta Cinco, Nales Latu'nguahon is on recess until 10:00 a.m. Thursday, March 5, 2020. (end of transcript)